Oh, okay, great.
All right.
Hello, Commissioner Rogers, welcome back. I'm just noting for the record, you're on Zoom versus here in the room with us, change of state, but you are very much present. So we're back for the afternoon session of the Board of Commissioners work session for Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three. We have our third big topic of three big topics for today. Thank you for setting the stage for us, staff. This one is MISTIP bonding slash gap funding scenarios. So we'll bring our staff up for this topic and turn it over to Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, Chair and Board. What a day.
Oh.
Heavy day. I just have to express that, and a couple of us had noon meeting in there, too. So I may have to just take a deep breath. But I think the reality of what we're working on today is really bringing to light some of the challenges that we have and really appreciate your board's attention and leading into the needs that multiple departments have in meeting the needs of our community today and in the future. Of course, this does contain funding sources, too, and competing funding sources. Staff are continue to develop options on how to fund our transportation capital needs, both looking backwards, which we dove deep into your last workshop work session, completing prior projects, and also looking forward to starting future projects and setting the stage and clear definition for an ongoing transportation capital plan. Currently, LUT staff have been working and coordinating with finance and the administration office. Really, this is just a status update today to really bring to light of the work that's been done. LUT will be returning to you on a routine basis as this work continues, and we look forward to your questions and input through these discussions. There will be multiple points in time as we really build out the county's true first capital improvement plan. Transportation is one element, and transportation projects and financing is part of that component. And so that's really today's conversation. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Roberts, which will talk a little more in depth about the purpose of today's work session.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Glad to be back with you today, as Tanya mentioned. As Tanya mentioned, we'll be back, kind of building on our work as we go here, advancing our state of the practice here. So real quickly, I just thought I'd start with a quick overview on what we're looking to try to achieve with our briefing today. So really, we wanted to step back and just provide a little bit of context around transportation funding more generally, so we'll take a quick look at that. And then a little bit of just background history about the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, just context setting. And then, as Tanya mentioned, we're looking at how we sort of look back at prior capital projects, so looking backward, how do we sort of finish the things that we've started? And then how are we able to set the stage for a successful future for an ongoing transportation program? So in terms of just framing again, this is, we thought this was helpful. So like every service or need that government provides, you're always trying to balance competing demands and expectations. So we thought this was just helpful that, you know, where we're looking to go with this is in that nexus between, you know, finding the best balance of all of these four competing demands, capacities, and expectations. So in terms of priorities, like any transportation agency, usually the first priority is maintain what you have and try to help make that system that we have as safe and functional as we can. In Washington County, the county itself manages about thirteen hundred miles of streets and roads in Washington County, and our pavement conditions are generally pretty good, but they have been slowly declining over time. And I know if anyone's been tuned in, I know Commissioner Fai hears it a lot, ODOT's looking at a sort of financial shortfall into the future just for their basic operation and maintenance needs. And I think most agencies share a similar longer-term outlook, and so there will be continuing ongoing discussions around how we ensure that we can continue to maintain the system that we have over time. We're also managing quite a lot of curb ramp and traffic signal accessibility upgrades that are needed throughout the system, so that's ongoing work. And then we also have some bridge needs for truck traffic and seismic strengthening. So we're just starting to get a handle on some of those needs, and we'll be talking more with you at some point in the future about that work as well. And then sort of the second tier of things is really how do we accommodate our community as we grow and change? And so, as you know, driving around town, we have a lot of existing roadways in the urban area that just lack basic infrastructure, no sidewalks, no bike facilities. We have a lack of marked crossings at transit stops. We need transit stop amenities. There's a variety of just existing deficiencies. And then we also still have some transportation gaps in our urban areas, just connections that are proposed but have never been made and would be helpful just in terms of facilitating better access. And then we have our urban growth expansion areas that also need connected urban level transportation improvements. So you can just see there's a lot of needs in, as we talk about transportation as well. And so we're always, again, just trying to find the right balance between all of those different expectations and desires. As we think about, excuse me, sort of priorities and needs in the county transportation system, as we look at things like the regional transportation plan project list, there are more than six billion dollars of sort of major street and transit improvement needs that are identified in Washington County. And that's a combination between city and county transportation plans, things that TriMet's planning for their transit system network. And as you'll recall, I hope, we had identified a list of potential future MSTIP projects last year that totaled around four hundred million dollars, knowing that we still needed to winnow that list down significantly to match what we think would be available funding in a future transportation program. And just for context, the MISTIP 3D and 3E cycles, the two cycles that we're still trying to work to complete projects for, those were being funded at around thirty-five million dollars per year in actual cash flow into a pay-as-you-go system, or about a hundred and seventy-five million dollars each five-year cycle. And just a reminder again, Tanya alluded to it earlier, we are working on our first capital improvement plan countywide, including transportation. And so again, that's really the tool that we're migrating toward as we start really thinking about how to help make informed decisions about planning, prioritizing, and then financing future projects. This is just a quick snapshot of countywide or transportation revenues to Washington County. And what you see here is that we have two primary funding sources. The state gas tax and fees come from things like the state gas tax, vehicle registration fees, driver license fees, and those are apportioned out between the state, ODOT, counties, and cities all receive a share of those funds. We also have a county vehicle registration fee and a county gas tax. Those funds primarily on the right half of the chart tend to go into what we call more of our operations and maintenance, so taking care of that existing system and making those minor improvements, accessibility improvements, things like that, that are part of just helping to manage that existing system. On the other half of the chart, the left half, that's where we get more into capital funding capacity. And so on that side, the big slice, of course, is the Major Street Transportation Improvement Program, and that's a general fund allocation has been the way that's been funded since the mid, what, late nineties, nineteen ninety-seven. And there are some other funding sources in there, transportation development tax, that's a fee that development pays. There are some additional supplemental new development area charges that complement the TDT. And we received some other funding through the gain share grants, and Urban Road Maintenance District actually helps to fund some capital improvements within the urban unincorporated areas. Those have been mostly sidewalk and some limited biking improvement projects. And in total, these come out to right around a hundred and twenty-four million dollars in total funds per year.
Stephen, that county vehicle reg fees, nine million dollars, is that, has that been going up?
It has slowly, but it has been increasing. I think what we're seeing again is a trend of vehicle registrations are flat in Washington County, and so that revenue will essentially stagnate or maybe at that point where it's pretty much leveled off, but hopefully will remain somewhat consistent over time.
Well, actually, I'd heard because we don't, really don't have any enforcement of pulling somebody over anymore when we see tags. I mean, we used to be kind of pretty aggressive about when you move here from out of state, register your car. We don't do that anymore.
To clarify, it's not that we can't, but the state captures so much of that money that local law enforcement is not really incentivized since so little of that.
We don't share the vehicle registration fee with the state.
No, what you're talking about is enforcement of the law that within some period of time you move here from out of state, you're supposed to register your vehicle here in Oregon, and people don't.
Yeah.
They go to, to, they wait until their plates are expired or they realize they're expired. But so the source of that is that local law enforcement is not, is no longer incentivized because the state captures so much of that citation revenue.
Well, I guess that's why I was saying, I was expecting your answer to be flatlined. Yeah, at nine million. I mean, I was surprised at that number initially, but still flatlined, yeah. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Because there's lots of out-of-state plates.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe just a quick clarification on the county gas tax. That is a countywide gas tax, and in the ordinance that the board adopted, establishing that tax, the revenue is shared, forty percent of the revenues are distributed to the cities in the county. The county retains sixty percent, so the nine million roughly that you see there is the county's share of those funds.
The point.
Zero point eight million.
Point eight.
Or, I'm sorry, vehicle registration fee, I apologize.
They have a lot, they have a lot more gas stations than we do. What are we doing?
And the county gas tax is also shared, sixty percent of the county gas tax is shared with cities.
Sixty percent is shared with cities?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said it was the other way around. We are a benevolent organization, aren't we?
The, yeah, the registration fee is sixty to the county, forty to cities, the gas tax is sixty to the cities and forty.
Oh, okay.
And some cities have their own gas tax, too.
Well, yeah, they have a lot more gas stations than we do, so depending on where you buy the gas is where you're paying the tax.
So this is, this gas tax, the county unincorporated.
It applies to all gas stations across the county.
So the Hillsborough gas tax is in addition to that?
Is in addition to the county gas tax.
Yeah, so any city.
Correct. They only have the county gas tax.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I used to know them all who had them and didn't. I think Cornelius Tiger.
North Plains.
North Plains now, that's right, that's a recent one. Yeah, maybe Hillsborough.
Please state, just tell us where to send the check for those of us who drive electric cars.
Yeah, well, and your registration fees have increased for electric and higher efficiency vehicles, so there's, there's an attempt at trying to.
Yay, I still drive on roads, still happy to pay a maintenance fee.
And I think that's part of an ongoing discussion about, you know, we'll probably be migrating away from a, from a fuel-based tax at some point, user charge or user fee. So really quickly, wanted to just touch on the MSTIP, the Major Street Transportation Improvement Program. So this is all wrote to you all, I'm sure, but just for anyone watching, this did begin as a series of voter-approved levies, starting in nineteen eighty-six. Since nineteen ninety-seven, it has been funded by your board's allocation of general fund monies into continuing to build transportation improvements on major county, streets of countywide significance. It has really been very effective in leveraging other funding, local, state, and federal funds. And then we just listed below the criteria that have pretty much always applied to projects since we've moved to the county, providing the ongoing funding for the program. So really focusing on safety, some traffic flow congestion needs, safe on those major roadways, and then really looking at multimodal improvements, like I mentioned, addressing some of those deficiencies in our existing two-lane country roads in the urban area. In addition to the, what I would call the traditional pay-as-you-go or pay-go version of the MSTIP program, the board in twenty fifteen also adopted the MSTIP Bonding Cost Sharing Program, and that was a one-time partnership that created a specific separate list of projects that are being delivered primarily with funds generated by bonding against future revenues. And those are the four high-growth areas that were specifically identified. They were UGB expansions that had occurred in sort of the late two thousands, early twenty teens. And so the county is ultimately responsible for paying about two-thirds of the cost for those projects through the MSTIP. And then other funding sources pay for the other third of those costs. So as a refresher, we had two planned bond sales as a part of that program. We completed the first in twenty sixteen, the second one we're now planning for this upcoming fiscal year. As I mentioned earlier, the, it's the annual revenue growth from the MSTIP general fund allocation has been the source for paying back the debt service on the, on the, on this program. And again, one of the reasons for doing this was helping to both address some of the needs that were being identified in these expanding areas, but also continuing to meet needs in those existing urban areas that have all of the deficiencies that we alluded to earlier. Oh, there we go, okay. So you've seen this graphic before, we're sort of taking a somewhat sequential approach as we step through these different needs and think about how we move forward. So we're going to spend some time looking backward a little bit now, so thinking about how we address the funding gap that we've discussed previously with you, so completing both the bonding cost-sharing projects, but also the MISTIP 3D and 3E projects. Then we'll pivot, of course, and talk a little bit more about the future. So in your package, you can, you can see this list, that's just, you've seen this version of this before, but this is the sort of tentative delivery schedule for the remaining bonding cost-sharing projects in front of you. Oh, we left off the color codes, green, green being sort of design and permitting, purple being right-of-way and acquisition and permitting, and then the blue being the construction phase. So we mentioned that our prior briefing, that we're preparing a second bond issue that's been planned for this purpose, and so we've included some assumptions about, about the bonding rate and an assumed twenty-year term. We estimate that that generates just under five million dollars in annual debt service obligations, and so the cost of borrowing the sixty million dollars at the end of that five-year, or rather twenty-year payback period is about ninety-eight million dollars.
Stephen, I saw, when I was working with the TLT plan with those numbers, the tax-exempt bond rate was four point one nine, so why is yours so much higher?
We've tried to just estimate really conservatively. There's still some uncertainty about rates into the future, state economists.
Yeah, this is ways out, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it could be yet another increase or two in the coming year before they expect rates to start coming back down.
Yeah, and that was the current rate, so yeah, you're, you're right, okay.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for pointing that out, too. I did want to note that we, we're trying to be quite conservative in terms of these estimates.
Can we go back one slide? Because I'm afraid I need to ask this question here, because I'm afraid without it, I think the answer is going to help me digest the further on. So you had a very specific set of projects for those high-growth new UGB add areas for the bonding cost-sharing program. In order for you to have the financing to complete that list, so to go through the blue for all of these, as the slide depicts, do you need to do the next round of bonding?
Yes.
Okay. And at what point will, do you know at what point, once you have done that bonding, when the additional revenue will pay off the bonds for the first set of projects?
Yes, actually, we have some future slides where maybe we can talk, come back to that point, if you'll remind me when we get there.
So vocabulary-wise, is it okay for me to call them the first set of projects? Or still call them as the bonding cost, the BCS?
Yeah, yeah, so we refer to them as the BCS projects. I think that might be useful, yeah.
Thank you.
For clarity, thank you. No, those are good questions.
I'm still on the journey.
All right. This clicker is, okay.
Being slow today.
Right. So the, these are the 3D and 3E projects that remain to be completed, so the same color code applies here, design, right-of-way, and permitting, and construction. And you can see that these are expected to be largely completed as we get out into, really mostly in the twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe, but we have a couple of projects that will just take longer, and a couple of those we anticipate could go out into the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. Yes.
Here's where I have a slight difficulty with this graph. So you said for these projects to be completed, but that's with you knowing that the ones that are only in green were only intended to be designed. So this is where I have to make sure I'm totally anchored. When you say completed, it's not actually built-completed. I can't compute, I can't, those two are not synonymous.
Yes, that, that's a good, good point of clarification. So, so as you see, the projects that only have the green stage were design-only, so that would, in those projects, it would mean completing the design work, and then on the other projects that have the blue, then that would be.
Complete construction.
Yes, thank.
Thank you.
On this slide, I would refer to the white dot on the end of each of the projects that speaks to what is part of the scope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But given, so I went back to the prior presentation to get the legend. So I just needed to make sure that we declare that 3D and 3E are all done, because those that were expected to be constructed are constructed, but those that were only expected to be designed, as in the green, they will have been completed in 3D or E by virtue of, or actually, they're all 3E because they were merely designed.
Correct, yeah. The work that was anticipated in those programs will be completed, whether that was design or construction, yes.
Got it. That it was really important for me to internalize that as it relates to the ninety-million-dollar gap. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great questions, thank. Okay, let's go forward. And you've seen the ninety-million-dollar gap slide again, we just wanted to include that again as a reminder. And so what we've done, we introduced to you last month, these three basic scenarios, and these are essentially the same, same ones that you saw last time with, with one very minor edit to one of the scenarios, and I'll mention that here in just a few minutes. But in all of the scenarios, I want to just highlight some, some consistent assumptions, the top two rows in the table there. So these do build on a presumption or an assumption of an annual general fund transfer for transportation, and we have some charts that will depict that for you. And then all three of the scenarios assume that we're bonding that sixty million dollars for the bonding cost-sharing project completion, so those, those carry across all three scenarios. And then where you see the variations are whether or how much might be bonded to help close the funding gap for the MISTIP 3D and 3E projects. So in the first scenario, we call it the sixty-million scenario, that, that involves bonding only for bonding cost-sharing projects. The second scenario, the in blue, that involves bonding sixty million for bonding cost-sharing projects and an additional sixty million dollars to help with the funding gap for the 3D, 3E projects. And then in the third scenario, bonding a total of a hundred and fifty million dollars, and that's a combination of sixty million for bonding cost-sharing and ninety million dollars to address the entire gap fund needed for the 3D, 3E projects. So as we looked into those, so the, the sixty-million-dollar scenario, as I mentioned, just bonding for the, the bonding cost-sharing projects, the 3D, 3E funding gap would be accommodated just by spreading those projects out over a longer period of time. So just taking that same body of work and just stretching it out over time and using ongoing general fund allocation to eventually close that gap. Some of the challenges with this scenario is it just takes much longer to complete some of those projects and create some, some significant, I, I think you'll remember, hopefully, last time, we talked a lot about project pipeline. This would create some, some pretty significant project pipeline gaps for us. We'd have a real dearth of, of work to do for a period of time as we continued catching up on those prior projects. And that's the primary reason this is not our recommendation. And so Chair, I think back to your question earlier about the debt service. So one of the things that we've tried to depict in this slide, so you see the straight line, the, the sloping line there, that is an assumption about a general fund transfer. And so a couple of key points I want to make about that, it assumes that the seven percent reduction in last year's budget became a new baseline for any future increases in, in the MSTIP general fund transfer over time. So it bakes in that recurring, essentially, reduction over time.
Are you saying that, that the seven percent increases, it, it just keeps happening every year?
Yeah, so I, maybe a better, I'm trying to think of the right way to say this. So there was a reduction in the general fund allocation of seven percent last year, so we've used that as a starting point, a new baseline, and then any increase in general fund allocation over time is starting from that lower baseline. And then, so the, the line is also predicated on assumptions around about four point four percent assessed value growth over time, which is actually a relatively conservative estimate going forward. And so again, trying to be somewhat conservative in those assumptions. And so it does assume, though, a, a pattern of continuing the prior method of funding the general fund transfer. And then what you see at the bottom there is the gray part of the stacked bar chart, and that really would be the amount that we would allocate for general fund service. And so what we're proposing in these scenarios is rather than simply capturing all of the revenue growth each year and using it for debt service, we're really proposing a longer payout period at a lower cost per year. So a more, that's a more.
Service over time.
Right, so that's a more typical way that agencies do bonding, and it's, it's somewhat rare, I think, that, that there's such an aggressive payback scheme as what we did in twenty sixteen with that bond. And so you'll see that assumption baked in. So, so the debt service would continue on significantly, you know, a number of years off this chart, but we wanted to just sort of give a, give a preview of this sort of next five-to-six-year cycle here.
And that's why the, the change in the size of the gray from twenty, from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right, right. So we, we start with a smaller bond that first year, and, and then the, in these charts, you'll see then the, the lighter color above that line is the amount of bonded revenue that is assumed in these scenarios. And the scenarios are very illustrative at this point. We've been working with our chief finance officer, we're kind of weeding through these, and really, depending on any. We're kind of waiting through these and really depending on any direction and input that the board provides today. That will just help us as we continue developing those scenarios in more detail.
You have another question?
Yes.
I'm looking at the slides on posted online. It's different than what you have over there.
Oh, yes. Standby. So we got a little bit fancy here. So we have some animation on this slide.
Oh, okay.
So one of the things that, yeah, so, so I wanted to sort of explain the, the basic, basics of this chart. And then what we tried to do to help also illustrate some differences between the scenarios over time is thinking about how each of these scenarios would allow us to start bringing new projects into the project pipeline. And the idea being that we, we, the blue projects would be approximate funding that could be made available for what I would call it, future new projects that have yet to be determined. And so what you'll see in each of the scenarios is that we would be able to gradually ramp up the amount of funding that we're allocating to future projects. And so back, back to that pipeline issue, just trying to help ensure that we get new projects into a pipeline and continue meeting those future needs.
So step one, earlier, you led me to believe there would be a bigger gap with the project pipeline. And now with this animation, what you're showing is there is a pause in pipeline building. But it looks like you have momentum in terms of the pipeline starting in twenty eight, twenty nine.
Correct. Right. Yep. Yep. So in this scenario, we don't anticipate that we would start funding design of new, what I'll call new projects until twenty five, twenty six.
Okay.
And then eventually probably starting to get some of those projects potentially into construction as early as twenty eight, twenty nine, but more likely twenty nine, thirty. If that makes sense. And this, this is where this becomes a little bit confusing because we're really trying to think about how we're addressing this backlog, if you will, of projects. But it also has some implications for what the future.
Yep.
Looks like as well.
Yep, I see.
Yeah. And happy to come back to any of these with questions as we go through these. So don't, don't hesitate to jump in. So moving on and to what we were calling the hundred and twenty million dollar scenario. So again, bonding sixty million for bonding cost sharing and an additional sixty million to help close that gap for existing projects. And what you'll see in this scenario, again, the bonding rate and the payback terms are consistent. And that generates over that twenty year period, a total cost of, of a hundred and ninety six million dollars over time. And so this scenario would close about two thirds of that identified funding gap of the ninety million dollar funding gap. And then the remainder of that is being made up by helping to rescale some projects. We, we've re-sculped some projects and then also, also combining that with some project delays.
Okay, can we go back to the prior slide?
Sure.
Those are not new projects in the blue. What I heard you talk about is those being new projects in the pipeline. Rather, what, going back to the bullets, this, you've reduced project scopes where feasible and you've delayed D and E. Are you saying three F is new, but all D and E are completed in this one?
Yes, right. So, so the.
On one hand, you say they're delayed. But on this slide, you say they're completed.
Right. So they would be completed over time with some delay, if that makes sense.
Okay, so they'll be completed by the end of twenty nine, thirty?
That would be our hope. Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Just trying to make sure I get it.
Yeah, no, yeah, this is complicated. So appreciate the questions and happy to slow down and talk through any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I got it.
All right. And so maybe I'll just jump to the chart here. But again, as you're saying, I think what, what we find in this scenario is that by creating some additional bonding capacity, it will help us to address that backlog of projects. And again, ramping up with newer projects a little bit sooner than we would otherwise. And so what we've tried to do here is again depicting that potential feathering, if you will, of existing project work with new project work over this next say five to six year cycle.
So the dark blue in this case, so the, there's light blue, there's medium blue, and there's dark blue.
Right.
For what my eyes see.
Yes.
So the medium blue is the completion of the three D, three E projects.
Correct.
And the dark blue is that ramping up of the funding towards three F new projects.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yay.
And the gray is debt service. Yeah. And you'll see the debt services increase here because we would be bonding twice as much, right? So the debt service is higher in this scenario. And what you'll see, and again, these are, these are still conceptual. They're not super detailed at this point. But what, what we're trying to depict here is that again, this helps to facilitate initiating new projects in the upcoming fiscal year. That helps to reduce that pipeline gap that we were anticipating between prior projects and future projects.
Yeah.
And so we think that this is really the, the scenario and, and our recommendation to proceed would be based on this scenario. And we think it achieves the best balance between incurring debt service to try to help catch up, but also helping to ensure that we have a somewhat consistent project pipeline so that we're able to keep staff busy and continue doing, can, doing the good work. And, and I know you'll have heard and will probably continue to hear, there's lots of demand for these services as well, or, you know, improvements as well. So we think this is a good balance between those different competing desires, if you will. And then the final scenario, so this was the scenario we called the one fifty scenario. So really looking at bonding both the sixty million for bonding cost sharing and potentially bonding for the entire ninety million dollar funding gap. This is not our recommendation also because we really don't think, as I mentioned, it, it probably swings too far on the side of taking on additional debt that we probably don't need to. And again, additional debt service simply, you know, reduces our potential for what we do with those funds in, in real time, if you will. And so you'll see here, we also propose bonding over four years, but at a slightly higher amount. So about thirty seven point five million per year over four years achieves the full hundred and fifty million dollars in bonding. And this one, again, to simply helps to advance new projects a little bit sooner. But we think again, the, the, the prior scenario really is, achieves the best balance of all these different things that we're hoping to achieve.
Could I pause there for just one second? And I'm not going to put you on the spot on this one. I'm going to put Ms. Angie on the spot for this one. If I heard Stephen write, this is not the preferred scenario because it goes too far for taking on additional debt. I'd like to unpack that a little bit. Because folks take on mortgages for houses, right? The idea of taking on debt, debt isn't necessarily a bad thing. But I need you to help bring to life why it leans more towards bad versus good. And I'm thinking about things like, does it mean that, what are we putting at risk if we were to make this decision? Is it our bond rating or what? What, what is put at risk?
So that's a good question. I would also defer and get a further answer from Greg Munn when he's here. What I will say is the more the board ties up revenues in debt, it limits the opportunity for flexibility in, in the future of those funds. So there could be opportunities to further leverage transportation projects to be flexible and nimble. So that's where issuing more debt, it really contains you into what you're currently issuing the debt for without the flexibility in projects. But we have the ability to issue debt. That, that's not a concern.
But what, looking at this slide and Commissioner Rogers, you might want to chime in to see if I'm on the right school of thought. Commissioner Rogers has been influencing us to bond as early as we can. And so that's one reason why I'm exploring, this is just a flavor of that. Bonding that amount earlier versus waiting later. As far as I haven't, until I'm told otherwise, I'm going to assume that if we choose today to do a hundred and fifty million, that you have what you need, well, you have what you need, the missed D and E projects are, are all defined. So and it only puts you in a better position for completing the definition of a three F list, right? So this, you're being too vague for my taste on why it would be a bad thing. So I'm just going to leave it there for, to come back to it with Mr. Munn because I'm seeing it as the opposite.
Okay.
Yeah. And I might, to, to your point, I, I may just add, I think, I think there is this notion that we, we think that the hundred and twenty million scenario sort of carries us through this current gap issue. And so it is that trade off, I think of just what's the amount that we need to bond in order to complete this obligation, if you will, or commitment. And not as Ms. Angie was just suggesting, you know, not tying up future revenues more so than maybe needed. And I think that this is a good, might be a good segue as we start to pivot to thinking a little bit more about what the future of a program might look like to some.
We know we.
As much as we're trying. Right. As much as we're trying to step through these in a very sequential and somewhat segregated way, you really can't because everything is, it implicates the future, you know, what you do now implicates the future and vice versa. So. So, yeah, thanks for coming on the journey with us because.
So I think, Chair, that's an outstanding question we will take and take that back and work on a concrete.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I don't think we have a clear enough answer. Right? Since one twenty still doesn't get all of D and E done. And one fifty does get all of D and E done. I still don't see that we, we have a clear definition of what the difference is between a one twenty and a one fifty. But from the standpoint of a value for us to make a final decision, I don't think we have enough data.
Okay.
We'll bring that back.
That's a critical piece. It's missing in my opinion. Sorry.
Great. Be back. Thank you. Okay, so we just took a quick look at some of the pros and cons. So this is kind of ties into our discussion that we were just having here. So we're, as we looked at these, again, just thinking about balancing out that ongoing debt service required for the improvements, along with the availability of both county staff, but also contractor and consultant capacity. So again, as we were considering those, those factors, we just felt that the hundred and twenty million dollar scenario looked like a sweet spot for all of those different reasons. So the right amount of money over the right period of time to help mitigate that funding gap, but not taking on maybe additional debt service if it wasn't necessary. But we definitely appreciate your, your point and we'll come back with some additional analysis looking at these two, at these two options. Any questions before we move on?
I would make a comment if I can. First of all, Stephen, thank you for moving a whole bunch off your conservative position before about not bonding. As you know, I, I, I was set to do this and hoped that we'd do this a year ago because I could see that costs were accelerating and you might share with the board what they are. I mean, they're between twelve and twenty percent. And we, I knew we could bond at that time at three, four percent. So I want to congratulate you. It's always hard, I know, in the public sector to take a little bit of risk. A couple of little points, you know, was the rest of the presentation. When the chair was asking about colors and how they, how they work and what that means, the public will ask the same thing. So I, I think that you've done an excellent job. I certainly wouldn't criticize that. But I think it needs to be a little more descriptive in what you're presenting because it, it's confusing. You, you've got people, five people sitting at four and myself who, who've been through this a bit. And we're still saying, well, what does that color mean? And what does this do? And how does that do? So I, I, I would say that as far as your ask on the, you know, whether the one twenty or one fifty, I, I tend to swing for the fences because I think that we know our costs are going to go up. Are we going to be in a recession? Yeah, I don't know about that. But if we are, then we bet wrong at the hundred and fifty. If things go kind of bumping along like they are now, we won't complete a bunch of projects and those who come after us are going to say, what were you thinking? I mean, you, you could have done what you needed to do. So I, I tend to go to the one fifty, but if you're, I mean, you've come a long ways from nothing. So I, I mean, one twenty at least gets it somewhere. The last thing I hope that you present in your presentation, these are just the projects that are in the pipeline. We're not talking about the opportunity fund and you might want to, that, that's been such a hugely successful program. And are there opportunities? And I know we get into the big city versus little cities and who has money and who doesn't. But we do have a gas tax that we share, even though it's very modest. And we do have the ability to go after state money and federal money. Is there an opportunity, and using that opportunity fund question, to say to cities, gee, we could do a bit more if you're willing to come in with some of your funds. I mean, we all know how they, you know, the fifty, thirty, twenty works. These are projects, some of them I can pick them off, if you went back the list, that benefit cities as much as they benefit all of us, even though it's a county wide network. So I, I'm hoping in your, your conversation today with the board that there might be some discussion of how do we integrate the opportunity fund? How do we get some cities to say, you know, that one's really important to me. Maybe we can cooperate. And so your hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty sounds like a big stretch of thirty million, but there may be thirty million dollars in funding out there that comes from other sources that we might be able to get there. So thank you. That's my comments.
You, Commissioner?
So we've heard from Commissioner Rogers. The three of you at this juncture. I don't have any questions. I'm still getting my head around all of this. Thank you. Similar for Commissioner Phi, anything for you, Commissioner Willie, at this juncture?
Now let's go ahead and finish up, I guess, step two and step three. I have a little different philosophy than Roy does on bonding that much money initially. So so yeah, I'll wait, finish up your presentation and then I'll comment.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll express mine. First, I want to confirm a sense that I have. It seems to me like planning and following through on missed up three E got a little, a little ahead of its ability to pay. But I also recognize that cost escalation has a big effect too. But thank you for confirming that. On Commissioner Rogers' comment on swinging for the fences, I'm not afraid of bonding at all. It's a very effective tool. And so I appreciate your comment there, Commissioner Rogers. On the other hand, I'm not so hopeful that cities have more to kick in. But that's just me. I would like to, or when I was, could we display slide four? It's titled countywide transportation system priorities. Thank you. I know going backwards isn't as swift as forwards. On this slide, I really want, well, wait, first of all. On this slide, I really want, well, wait, first of all, under maintain and manage a safe, functional and accessible system. Washington County manages 1,300 miles of streets and roads. What percentage of that number is just UUA neighborhood streets that's part of URMD versus part of the countywide transportation network?
It's just a little under one third.
One third is the UUA or?
One third is UUA, sorry.
Okay, thank you. The second reason why I wanted to see this slide is I want to recognize Commissioner Rogers' tenure. It's my belief that all of these statements have been holding true, not just for years, but for decades. They've existed, but I particularly want to recognize Commissioner Rogers' financial innovation in the work that you've done in, in your multiple roles in public service with misstep one, misstep two, and misstep three. Because for folks like myself who moved here in 1990, I've lived here for 33 years, but I have reaped the benefit of the county improving and expanding the transportation network in all of its pieces and parts. And this is why I am also very appreciative of the bond cost sharing model because those new UGB expansion areas were needed for the benefit of all of us. So that our transportation network could advance. So thank you for letting me speak to that. The last point I want to make is back here on slide 22. Here is my problem. So my mind remains open to all three of the levels that you've been talking to us about. But I'm not able to answer the question today on which bonding slash gap funding scenario do I prefer? One is for the outstanding question, but irrespective of that, I want to make sure that I'm being open and transparent with everyone. And that this is not a surprise to some of you at all. But I'm going to make sure that I've said it in multiple public meetings. We have, in addition to our transportation funding gaps, we have a funding gap of 13 million for the critical facility repairs. We have a funding gap of 10 million for the new ERP system that is vital for us to support our teams to move forward with all of the organizational work that is needed. HR, finance, procurement, and more. Look at the diagram, right? That's why we have all those circles. That's a $23 million gap. So there's been this $35 million general fund allocation over to misstep. And yet we have this $23 million gap. So I've been thinking about, well, what happens if we use, we could use one $23 million lump sum. There are different ways to do it to achieve that. Another way to solve that gap is through cost allocation. And while that will logically work, here's the reason I have a problem with it. Because it forces the problem onto staff for every single department. Public safety and justice, after that whole series of gaps we went through this morning and needs for LUT, HHS, our, our records, assessment, taxation, and elections. All of our general government is impacted by the prior board decision making that has left us with these end of life building problems of 13 million and a immediate ERP investment that is needed. And I fundamentally cannot put the burden of that gap on our workforce. Our workforce is committed, certainly, but they're already overworked and strained. And using a cost allocation model for that 23 million is too much for me. Now, why does this, why do I bring this up now? Because I just want to be clear that in order for me to be totally behind whatever bonding scenario we come up with, I do need to have a solution path for this. And don't worry, I've engaged with Ms. Angie, Ms. Fuller, and Stephen. And they're talking with Greg about options and possibilities. So that is in the works. But I'm going to need to have some sense of what those tools are without putting, putting the burden on our workforce before I'm able to do this, which is painful because I want us to move as quickly as possible on the bonding. No mixed message there, Catherine. So, so anyway, thank you for listening. I appreciate it. I'm ready to go on through the rest of the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So jumping ahead now, we're going to be talking about the future a little bit further, step two in our process. So how do we start thinking about incorporating new program or new projects rather into a capital program going forward? So just a quick reminder of sort of our process for how we in the past and hope to continue making decisions around some of these major street investments. So we work with our partner staffs to develop a list of priority projects and those get brought forward to our elected officials for their review and consideration. We do significant community engagement, look into how those projects could be funded or financed. And then once we have a decision about projects and priorities, then staff moves forward with doing the implementation work. Our elected officials through the Washington County Coordinating Committee, so that is Commissioner Phi representing the county, and then an elected official from each of the cities in the county, get together, review priorities and funding proposals, if you will, for major street projects and then forward their recommendation to the board. And ultimately, the board, looking again at this countywide portfolio of needs and services, makes final determinations about transportation funding and project prioritization. Those then get translated into countywide budgets and our capital improvement planning work. So as we move forward, again, with this idea of prioritizing future projects, again, balancing all of those different needs and expectations that we talked about earlier and, and restraints, we look, are looking to build on the work that was done during the misstep 2328 process, really looking at future project priorities. You may recall, we had a list of 20-ish, 25 projects that totaled around $400 million in estimated costs. We knew we couldn't fund that. So we have additional work yet to do to try to bring that list down to something that will be more manageable. So we look to pick that process up later this year and into the springtime. And again, that work will inform our capital improvement planning process. And also these ongoing funding and financing discussions will be happening in tandem. Wow, glided right past that. So we're just taking a peek into the future. So this is really just to introduce concepts to you all. We'll continue working with finance as we're both refining sort of the looking back scenarios and that this is now looking forward. What, what would a potential future transportation program look like or how and or how would it be funded or financed? So we've just outlined three, again, sort of potential scenarios for what that could look like. So one of those is sort of continuing with the idea of a legacy pay as you go program. That would look very much like the past program going forward. And then on the opposite extreme, there's a scenario where we could potentially just bond for 100% of whatever transportation programming the board is comfortable moving forward. And then in the middle, maybe a hybrid concept. So some balance of continuing some pay as you go allocation. And then a, some introducing some bonded indebtedness. And I would say that middle scenario is probably where most jurisdictions land. It gives you some flexibility, I think, as Ms. Angie was just referring to, in the near term or immediate opportunities and needs to have some funding available to do that. But for things that have been long planned, those can be funded and financed through debt service over time. And there is even a possibility, if we were maybe interested, if the board were interested in making a transition from more of a legacy kind of pay as you go option into a more debt service or bonding, funding option. That hybrid scenario might also look like the bridge in between those two scenarios. And I think back to one of Commissioner Rogers' questions earlier was the notion about having some flexibility and opportunity, again, to take advantage of some of those opportunities that may arise. So that middle scenario probably ends up being a pretty good balance of those things. So we're really not expecting you to do much with this today. We just wanted to sort of introduce these concepts and see if you have any initial questions or thoughts about them. But as I mentioned, we'll just continue working with, with finance and, and the county administration about developing what these might look like into the future.
I have a question.
Okay.
Stephen, the legacy option isn't realistic because we have 90 million gap, right? So we can't continue to do that.
Well, I, I think that this would involve, and probably a key word I should have introduced maybe at the beginning of our conversation. I think there's always an element of rightsizing. So whatever we end up doing here, there's some component of rightsizing it. So again, balancing all of those different competing demands and constraints, right? So I think what, what would happen is if we were to, to go back to more of that, that legacy pay as you go program, that's a, that's sort of what's reflected in those charts that we looked at earlier in the presentation. So that just assumes that after we've done some additional bonding to complete the 3D, 3E projects, we would migrate back into our traditional pay as you go style program.
So we would bond 3D, 3D, but then revert back. Is that?
But I'm. No, now we're confusing a couple of things. Step one is only doing bonding for the bonding cost sharing. So it's continuing to use this legacy pay as you go for 3D and 3E. So your statement about, no, we can't do legacy, doesn't hold true. It just takes longer.
Right. And, and again, we're.
Other risks, like the pipeline risks.
Right. Well, and I, I think this is even, so, so I should, should be really clear. I think, I think when we talk about this future program, we're really now starting to think more than five years in the, in the future. So the, the scenarios that we looked at earlier do sort of depict going back to a more typical, our legacy pay as you go allocation. So we bond, finish off our 3D, 3E projects, those new projects that you see coming in. Assume that we wouldn't expend more than that sort of pay as you go. There's a good example. We, so we would not spend more than that pay as you go allocation on new projects over time.
Right.
So we'd, we'd have a, a period of increased revenues and then it would drop and we would have a smaller program going forward, but consistent.
This is where we're going to get caught up. And you're seeing it play out here. It's going to get worse with WCCC and beyond. Because you're talking about just general bonding. But it's getting confusing with bond cost sharing, right? Because we already do some extent of bonding. But for the, the remainder of what is misstep D and E, we've been using the pay as you go. But you're laying out, since we know we have to do a second round of bonding in order to complete the BCS projects, we're looking at the opportunity of bonding some additional revenue in order to accelerate the delivery, which also allows us to start building that pipeline sooner. Okay. In the, in a, in a way, it's like we need to change BCS to like high growth, right?
Right. And that was the original working title was the high growth.
Yeah.
Program, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And I.
I know. We, we're learning a lot about how naming helps us, but then doesn't help us. So.
Right. And yeah, and I appreciate the comment because this is, this is really important. As I say, we're trying to sort of step through this in a sequential way, but really it's very challenging to do that. And so as we continue working to sort of flesh out those short term gap funding scenarios and think about how this future program looks, we'll start to really try to tie those together, maybe so that you'll start to see a longer look ahead into the future about how those different programs might look. So I hope that will help.
I was going to just add one thing. In the future, we know going back, and I think you mentioned this chair about the cost escalation. We don't anticipate having as big of a problem going forward to new projects. We would have better cost estimates going into it. And so we could be more conservative on what is allocated toward them. So that the amount of revenue available could cover that.
So you're not saying that the cost escalation won't be there. What you're saying is that the estimates will be closer.
Oh, the list would be shorter.
Yes, yes.
And, and better at contingency planning, right? Making sure that we don't short ourselves assumptions about future cost increases. And everybody was caught off guard by the scope and scale of the cost increases we've seen in these last five or six years.
You didn't estimate a pandemic that would throw our side chains in?
Right.
I mean, because we, prior to COVID and what we just went through, we did have a period of cost escalation while I've been an elected official.
But it was a more traditional.
Oh, there were some pretty, pretty sizable ones as compared to the prior.
Oh, yes, yes.
But future conditions, it just.
Right.
So you're right. I get it. With the list management, that helps us to contain more the effects of the future unknowns.
Right. And Jessica's comment reminds me too, I think another really valuable element of the annual CIP process is that just builds in a, at least once a year checkpoint for us to come back and have a discussion with the board about how things are going. And do we need to make adjustments to our future trajectory for how we're doing, doing that work?
Which reminds me, all of this, sorry to interrupt folks. Commissioner Rogers had been pushing us to do another round of bonding. And I thought one reason, and you heard me say this multiple times, I thought we couldn't do another round of bonding because we didn't know enough yet about the projects. And in some ways, it's yes and no, because we do know what the high growth bond cost sharing projects are. But I, as I'm saying this, I'm reminding myself that you have revisited all of those estimates. And we did not have those estimates done prior to now. Okay.
Right. Yes. And, and I would say too, I know when Commissioner Rogers initially brought up the bonding idea, we agreed it was, it was a good idea. We simply just didn't have, based on the workload, capacity, projects in construction, we just didn't have capacity to absorb the additional funding in a timely way at that point. We're now at a point where we are already. And unfortunately, as Commissioner Rogers pointed out, rates have gone up.
Yep. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
So November 14th, we're going to have a little bit more information and come back to this.
We will. And, and then just really quickly, we have just a couple of quick slides here. So back to Commissioner Rogers' question about sort of programmatic allocations. And he specifically mentioned the opportunity fund. So we do want to just touch on that because again, while we're trying to think through these all sequentially, you really can't. So we have to be looking at all of these in, in simultaneously. So just a quick reminder that the allocations that we've had in our last two rounds of MSTIP have involved an opportunity fund. We started with $5 million over five years in the 2012 approval of the misstep 3D cycle. We quickly went through all of that money and found that the program was quite effective and quite well used. So when the board approved. So when the board approved the second round in MSDIP 3E, we increased that amount to $7.5 million. Again, very successful, all used. And in fact, you you may remember at a work session, we. We had sort of asked for a thumbs up to start even allocating some potential future revenues for opportunity fund because it has been quite successful. And that is actually an item that we need to bring back to the board is to formalize that. But. And so we we do anticipate that, as Commissioner Rogers pointed to, we do have more funding now available at the federal level certainly than we've had in the past. And so. It may make sense to incorporate a larger opportunity fund or and or a large project match program. So as we try to seek out some larger federal grants that might be in the 80 to 100 million dollar range, we would need these pretty large local share matches of 10 to 20 million dollars potentially. So creating almost a separate category for large projects. And then we have not established in the past a specific program contingency amount. So again, ways to help mitigate these unprecedented cost escalations or unanticipated circumstances. And so we think it also makes sense to. Actually clearly articulate a specific contingency component within the program. And sorry, just a quick thought here. So this does sort of tie back into that future, how we think about funding the future. So it may make sense to have continued. Some continued pay-as-you-go allocations to provide that flexibility for these match opportunities as they might arise. But also on the projects that we know we're going to build and fund locally, having those potentially bonded over a longer period of time. And.
Hang on.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions at this point? Okay. All right.
Yes.
Just trying to help.
Trying to rush along here. I see we're already over time, so I appreciate your patience. So again, just a quick preview of how we anticipate coming back to you on a regular basis as we continue working through, trying to refine these different funding options, both near term and in the longer term. Coming back with some prioritized prioritized project recommendations, working through the WCC in that process. And then as we move into early 2024, that's where we really get going on refining and building out the cap, the capital project. Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. And then bring that back to your board for adoption in spring in conjunction with our work on developing our budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
So. Commissioners. Any last questions about how we're proceeding on this or? Any other comments you'd like to share?
Yeah, you mentioned the 23 million. Where where does that fit into this conversation?
Oh, the $23 million gap. Where does it come in? As I said, I'm not going to be comfortable. About making a decision on a bonding scenario until. They've had the opportunity to come back to us with options, finance options other than cost allocation for that $23 million gap. Right? Because for all the financing things coming forward for us. I'm remembering we have a $23 million gap we have to solve.
I understand that. Just trying to, I'm trying to understand that. If we, let's just say we bonded the $23 million, would we add that into the MSDIP bonding and wrap that all up? And so.
I I'm not smart enough to know how they'll solve it. We need to let them.
Okay.
Bring the options forward to us.
Can I just refer? So what the chair had spoke with me about is just the concern that we have capital outlay gaps that we need to address. We're talking about transportation. There's the ERP. There's still the critical facilities. And we know that we will be entering another really challenging budget time. And so layering on and just assuming that a general fund can support all these. Costs and or through cost allocation. The chair expressed concern and wanted some options. So that's what currently Mr. Munn is working on.
Okay, I I get that. But when we incorporate that into a transportation conversation. Of using MSDIP money to pay for the annual bonds, then it sounds to me like we're blending. This together and expecting the MSDIP money to pay for that.
I would suggest pausing on that until staff can come back with some options.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. One redundant comment and a couple of new ones. One. Again, if if we could be more clear in in what the colors mean and. How how these things are going to be done in the newer comments are. It's the cities here that were considering this. I think it's really incumbent upon us. To be very, very, very clear as to what this funding will do. And I know you say, well, someday we'll build it out. I recall and Nafisa probably can echo if it's the same. But mayors used to tell me all the time, once we get in the queue, we want to stay, stay there and get something finished really quickly. So I just hope that we're not sending a message that. Gee, we go out and bond and all of a sudden the problem is solved and they're going to have a project in two to three years. So. I I think, Stephen, you know that instinctively, but it'd be good if we'd understand. Another issue is I I know you guys are swamped. We have a thousand issues, but. The the market is so unpredictable that the longer we go, and I see you're in the spring of 24. Which probably isn't unreasonable, but the if you could do it a little bit sooner. To give the board some indication because it if costs keep going up, let's say they go up 10%. I mean, it's another five, 6% on your numbers between now and then. And that that's a lot of money when we're talking. The scale that we're talking about. So anything you could do to expedite that, that would be great. And I I guess the final thing, I just want to again, thank you and again, being redundant for. Take a looking, taking a look at the options and we did the high-growth bonding. You know, I can't even remember several years ago. It it was important because we understood that we needed to get some things done. And. I I this board, I think, from what I'm hearing in comments. They've all to the person come to the same conclusion that we got a high-growth area that we've got to deal with. And so I'm hoping that that you you make the great case and you are. Why bonding is necessary so that we can do things in the future. That need to be done, but we can finance them today. And so you won't. Be, and I hope you're there a long time, but I I hope you're not explaining in 10 years why things didn't get considered. So. Thank you for for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Fire, Teresa.
No. But thank you.
Great presentation. A lot of information.
Yes, and I I did want to just extend the offer to, I mean, we're happy to meet individually and walk through questions or comments on any of the scenarios. This has been very helpful. Today's conversation, just helping us to sort of continue advancing our work here and and helping us helping to shape that. So we appreciate that.
Thank you for extending that invitation. I'll start my take.
Okay.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Much like Commissioner Rogers was mentioning a few refinements, I'd like to take us back to slide five. Countywide transportation system priorities. My concern here is that WCC won't see themselves. In. How the sequence goes. And I know they do. So I want to make sure that it's clear that WCC. Continues to have advisement on the recommended project lists. But just because we're using the CIP to manage the financing particularly. But they're going to be really sensitive about the prioritization. Right? And that's why I wanted to highlight it on this slide. Because WCC advisement is very important. Next slide, slide six, whenever you're ready. This is a, this is an information-rich slide. I want to note a couple of things, though. With the way you described the pie chart and having two parts, it was truly excellent. County Road Fund is focused primarily on ops and maintenance, right? That's the whole gray right side. I think you would benefit from that. Those having the words in operations and maintenance. Then on the left-hand side, the focus there is on capital funding capacity. Similar but different. Oh, and one of these is a question. In on the chart to the right. And I don't want to get ahead of you.
No, no, go ahead.
The fourth one down, transportation development tax. I was around as an elected official when that whole. TIF was brought up to SDC. Requirements and became the transportation development tax as approved by the voters throughout Washington County. So that new development paid at least 28% of its impact, which was a double doubling. But for quite some time, that was waived. Or generally, how long was that waived?
It wasn't waived. We instituted a phased-in approach. We actually. The the original increase from the TIF rate up to the doubled TDT rate was expected to happen in 25% increments each year for four years. What ended up happening was that we instituted significantly smaller phase increases earlier in the program. And so I want to say.
After the voters approved it?
Yes.
Yes. So here's my point. The Great Recession happened here, folks. That's what this is all about. But it meant that. We were way below that 28% for a long, long, long time. Okay, so that backlog. Got bigger and bigger over the course of time. So I'm just putting it out there. That. And WC around the WCC table, yeah, the word waived was used. He Stevens describing it correctly legally. But so also on this chart. The sixth one down. Grants. This is where for the public's use, a little footnote or something. Because the sources of grants are usually federal, state, or metro. And then I recall that our primary use on gain share. Has been primarily for, I think, active transportation projects.
Correct. There's a primarily that and also a share for the intelligent transportation system. Improvements. So that's trying to use technology to help maximize the efficiency and throughput of the system that we have.
Yep. So I think those two. Would would help complete. Those slides and then. There was one more. Sorry, I had a. I had a. A list for myself. Yes, slide 29 is the last one. Because as you put together these great presentations, I really, I really appreciate how we're able to continue using them. So this is where the timeframes on, oop, nope.
Okay.
There you go. I'm concerned a little bit about these timeframes. We thought these projects would be defined. We. Others define these projects for 3D. In a timeframe where we thought they would be done. In that 2018 timeframe. It's not, I'm not asking, I'm not picking on it from the standpoint of what was envisioned or what these original dates mean. What I'm thinking about is how we carry these definitions forward. So what I'm. Posing, and this is merely posing that. And I need to get up and talk with my hand. Instead of having a friend here. Put in an arrow that puts. In your prior slide, you talked about when the set might be completed.
Oh, I see. Right.
Similarly, up there. Right? Because what all this hard work that you're doing is how do we complete these projects? Right? And we as elected officials, and I wasn't at the table, but there was a lot of excitement about, oh, good, we get to dig in and. Get some definitional wins. And it's like this board is going, whoa, whoa, whoa. We're not going to look for. Cheerleading here. Instead, we're going to make sure we can build these things before. We get into. Defining lists and patting ourselves on the back for adopting a 3F list. So. That's why I just wanted to share those comments on this slide. Because you're doing the absolute needed discipline thing. For our community, and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
That's it from me. Very helpful.
Well, thank you so much for your time and I apologize if we went long, but thank you for sharing with us and talking through this.
You don't have to apologize for helping, helping us understand, take the time to understand and for get our, getting our questions asked. And answered.
And for the opportunity to make the best decisions.
Yes, of course. And I'll just note it here. I'll I'll forward a copy to Kevin for the board, but we received, Ms. Angie received earlier, a letter from the city manager of Beaverton, just expressing support for. Continuing on with these discussions and. Just highlighting, I think, the importance of the the program to couple the projects in the city of Beaverton. Will make sure to share that out with you too.
Great. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Well, thank you all.
All ready. All righty. Any any last breaking news that we need to cover before we adjourn today's work session? Nope.
No news is good news.
Okay, well, good luck to you with getting all those tax filings done, Commissioner Rogers. Take care.
Just, I didn't mention in my update this morning, I'm going to be on vacation next week, so I just want to.
Wonderful time. Yes, we're hereby adjourned.